Okay. So. In order for us to start, we need to have everyone sitting down, ready to go. We were supposed to start twenty seconds ago according to George.
Wait, when is the test? Is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
But not everybody has this class tomorrow.
Absolutely, they do.
Yeah.
Oh.
Perfect timing. Thirty-five seconds ago. Okay, so listen up. Here's the format. Again, I appreciate you all for being here. It is much better to be here and ask your questions than to just listen to a recording which everyone else will have to do uh tonight that didn't show up. This will be on the headline immediately after we're done here. Uh you can listen to it as many times as you'd like. Ultimately, what we're trying to do here is not to one by one, question by question, go through the study guide, but to get deeper clarification on anything we need. And that could be through the help of one another, that could be through my guidance, however you wanna do it. So you can just fire questions up at me and we will try and come to some truth.
Um I'm gonna ask the class this one because.
Sure.
Not no more answers here.
Okay.
Um I didn't do a very good job on uh Thanatopsis, so can someone tell me what that story is about?
Oh.
Thanatopsis?
I said no comment. The guy talked really confusing about nature.
I'm like, oh, gonna die.
That was about nature?
Yeah.
This is, this is good. Yes, I did. You're good. Do I have an extra study guide? No, but somebody left their study guide in my room.
Oh, that sucks.
Uh it was just.
That's mine.
Get out of here, that is mine. So. So weird.
Oh.
Pretty sure Mr. Reed has just given away the answer.
So wait, there's about nature?
It's good to know that there's care being taken.
So is your favorite story?
Did you read the poem?
I did not.
Okay, that's problematic. You wanna read the poem tonight.
I know, I, I, I will, but I was just confused on my words. It's the one where people like.
Because you didn't read it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, alright, so let's just be clear on that.
So how, so when I go back to read it tonight.
When you go back to read it, you're gonna read this wonderful, wonderfully beautiful poem about a guy reflecting on death. And as he's reflecting on death, he's gonna say, you know what, when we die, it's really not the end. We end up going into the earth. And when we go onto the earth, we become the s-. Actually, not we, they, as in all the people who have died already. They were the kings and queens and wonderful people, family, friends, ancestors from before are all down there waiting for us. As a matter of fact, there are a million times more people in the ground than there are on the planet. But, once we go into the earth, we actually contribute to nature and the soil and the trees that grow. And then it becomes this huge cycle. And even though a ninety-year-old person is about to enter into that ground, a one-day-old baby is also on that path as well. So it doesn't matter who it is reading this poem, whether it was a hundred years ago or today, we're all going to the same place.
So how does that uh?
No, go ahead.
How does, how does that contribute or connect to the awe? How does the?
That was her question. So what do we think? I mean, what is awe first off?
It's like the, the respect of the unknown and like the fear and.
Okay, respect, reverence and fear, right? This whole poem is about death.
So it could be like.
And nature and the grand scheme of life, right? This whole big cycle that we go through.
So could it be the, like, the awe of the cycle?
All of the cycle, awe of nature, awe of the earth which we are going to become a part of, one which we can reflect on, have reverence for, but at the same time be fearful of, because it is the unknown. But still read the poem tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Joseph.
Uh what's the format of the question that you'd like?
Anyone?
Oh, I got.
Yes, George, save us.
Uh five?
What?
Five. Um.
Peter sighting.
Five questions.
Oh yeah, you picked five out of ten, Shorty.
Yeah, short answer.
Henry. Is it gonna be just like, here's your question, answer it, however.
No, you're gonna have more options than you have to answer. So you have to pick and choose.
Is the individual questions gonna be like, okay, this thing, why should I just answer it?
What do you mean?
Like if one of the questions is um how does Thanatopsis connect to awe?
No, the questions aren't gonna be like the study guide. These are just the ideas and concepts you need to know.
So the questions um could be like abstract ones.
Yes.
Can you be quiet?
Thank you, Jeff. Alright. Yes, McKenna.
Common elements we see in poetry. I said it yesterday and then you said that was wrong.
What are you talking about?
You said that was just like general Gothic that I said not just poetry.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay, well, what's the difference? What's the difference between?
There really isn't a difference. It's not that you're wrong, it's that it applies to both Poe and to Gothic literature in general, because he was the father of the Gothic tradition.
Oh.
His writing, his writing ends up becoming the basis for all Gothic texts.
Wait, isn't Poe more like individualism?
Well, that's the whole unit.
Yeah.
That's everybody, all the way back to, to the Romantics. The Romantics, the Transcendentalists and the Goths, they all kind of had this basic foundation of being completely concerned with the individual. And remember we talked about that, how, how the individual, it, it's kind of, it builds on the American identity and it's, it's throughout. It's, it's all of it. We start to focus on that. Rather than um, you know, focusing on God or civilization or society. Now, let's just have stories about individual people.
So then could Poe be like look more looking into the dysfunction of the mind?
He is, as opposed to Hawthorne.
Disfunction of the heart.
Right, and emotions.
Wait, so the common elements are like creepy house, mentally afraid man, sane and pretty woman?
Yes, um.
Plot includes murder.
Plot includes murder, what's the other one?
Physical and mental torture.
Physical and mental torture, good. Yes, Jeff.
What are some, what is physical, uh, mental torture?
What is mental torture?
Torturing someone.
Think of, alright, think of, think of Dimmsdale in The Scarlet Letter. That's a perfect example of mental torture in that because of his guilt, he was driving himself mad and he was actually making himself sick because of it, right? When we think about um The Purloin Letter, right? And when you become so obsessed with a letter that you give away your money or you lose everything, that's kind of that mental torture. You're torturing yourself, you know, with these, with these ideas that aren't necessarily true. So that's what we're talking about there. Anyone else?
Um what could be the key things in death on the poem? Would it be like greed, sin and betrayal?
Greed, sin, betrayal, yeah.
Would it also be those like symbols that were on the worksheet the one day you were on?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you wanna talk about symbolism as well, you can. Um symbols and themes are kind of, symbols tend to lead us to the themes, yeah, so that, that works as well. Yes.
Like, does the characteristics of Tom and his wife uh kind of reveal how people are at that time?
Yeah, if we're talking about um nationalism and what it's saying about uh how people are in America, yeah, that was, that was Washington Irving, even though it was a story of imagination, it was based on some of the things he was seeing in American culture, like greed, like abandonment, um. Right, right. And everything we've read says something about American identity, alright? We just have to be able to see what that is. Here.
So because like, this was like the first literature in like the new America that everything that they established is like the American identity?
Well, it, it was, it wasn't that it was the first creative literature, because we know that from Anne Bradstreet, you know, uh um writing poetry and whatnot. Um it wasn't the first creative literature, but it was the best. And it ended up becoming extremely popular in the time. And it was extremely reflective of what America was at that time. Remember, we talked about that this literature was influenced heavily by uncertainty in nature. Uncertainty in that people weren't sure that America was gonna be able to stick around and survive as a nation. And so the writing begins to, to reflect this uncertainty, right? At the same time, once the nation started to stabilize, we have this purchase of, of Louisiana territories. And now we have all this nature and all this un- undiscovered and unexplored um area that people are fascinated by. And so we start to reflect on that. What is our role? What's our connection to this land? And we see that in the um Transcendentalists, right? They're starting to reflect on, well, what does this all mean? Like, what's my place in all this? What do I find out there? Do I find truth? So really, there's a lot going on in American culture that, that influences this literature. And so we see Americans in it and it becomes to define, it begins to define what Americans are and what they believe.
Did Thoreau do some special things when he is doing his experiment?
Did Thoreau do special things? What do you mean?
He just sit there or do nothing or?
Well, if you read the whole text, he actually does, you know, he actually lives his life, you know. Um gathers his wood, goes fishing, things like that.
What's the reason?
I'm sorry?
What was the reason?
What was the reason? Why did Thoreau go out there?
That's just uh Emerson's idea about nature.
So he wanted to put into practice Emerson's ideas about nature. Here.
I'm talking about, I said like this, like the American culture. Um like from an, from a foreigner's like standpoint in developing American culture or from like actual, from like an American?
I think both, I think both. Anyone, and see, this is the thing, you don't have to, you can, you can be from anywhere, read ancient Greek mythology and, and know that's what the Greeks believed in and what they were like, right? Same thing holds true for American literature. Literature gives you identity. Remember when the Puritans were in power in America early on? Their writing, like Sinners in the Hand, Hands of an Angry God and their poetry, told us a lot about what it was to be a Puritan in the time. In the same way, this writing, it's telling us a lot about what Americans were like at the same time. Not just two other Americans, but to everyone that was reading it. If you understood that there was a connection, you could see what was going on there. And we'll see that progress throughout. As times change, uh the literature will change. So next unit, we're gonna talk about um the nation uh coming out of the Civil War and the type of wounds that needed to heal. And we're gonna see that in the literature. And so then the same way, right now, we're in a time of uncertainty, but prosperity and expansion, and that's reflected in the literature. Kennedy, you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh wait, Kathy had a question.
What's the name of Thoreau's experience?
Thoreau's, you mean when Thoreau goes out there? Or are you talking about Emerson?
Thoreau, he's, it asked for names for Thoreau's experience, but I don't know.
Anybody?
Wait, what's that?
We went to Walden Lane for two years, two months and two days.
It's Walden. It's just Walden. The name of the text, the writing, it's Walden, by Henry David Thoreau. Wait, hold on, for that, Kelly had a question.
What are the five elements of transcendentalism?
Anybody, it's easy one. George, you have this.
Oh yeah. Um, oh, I don't have my book.
I know a couple of them myself.
Alright, so concerned with the individual.
And then like individual.
Concerns in nature.
Okay.
Um nature is the facilitator.
Importance of nature, nature is facilitator.
Um showing the name of crime, like yourself, your true self.
Um that's more Transcendentalist, right? Wait, you asking Transcendentalist?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were asking Romantics, okay.
So nature is truth?
Yes, nature is where we go and find truth about ourselves, about society. Um. Again, just like with the Romantics, they were concerned with the individual. It was the, it was, there was an importance of nature, right? Also there was. I'm sorry?
Beauty of the human imagination.
Yes, the beauty of the human imagination. So remember how the, the Gothic said the human mind and the imagination takes you to dark places? That was a reaction of the Transcendentalists who said, imagination is great, imagination creates. It's where we find our truth in ourselves, but within nature.
What do you mean?
It's kind of concern with individuals, importance in nature, beauty of imagination, nature is truth, and what else?
Uh, what do we have as the fifth one? Cause we're, we're, they tend to bleed into each other, so that's why I have to.
You should know this.
You're our teacher.
I'm actually okay with what we talked about earlier. I don't know why I put five.
Just four?
Could I say right now, it's kinda confusing. Did that mean with the mid one on there?
That means I'm okay with what we're covering here, yes.
Just four?
Yes, those four.
So if you put down five on the test and we only put down four?
I think there's five within Romantics, within the Romantics. So I think that's maybe where I mixed up on that.
Oh, okay.
But you're arguing it down as though.
So. No. No.
What do you mean by um self, individual?
That the stories revolve around individual people.
Oh, not about like religion?
Not about, remember Franklin's talking about how you live your life and Thomas Paine's talking about society as a whole, right? Yes. Well, hold on. Madeline, do you have a question? You don't remember? Alright, Kyle.
Why is people so fascinated about?
I'm sorry, what?
Be quiet.
People so fascinated about nature?
Well, because you have to remember that many of them were either born or, or had descendants from England, which is, which is a very cramped island, and it's, you know, has a lot of industry. So then they come to America.
Isn't it nineteen seventy-four?
Just the very beginning of it, yeah, the very beginning of it. Which means there's still immigration coming in, people coming that have experience from other parts of the world. But really, America is this unique frontier. And so even if, even if they were born and raised in America, there's this, there's this really strong consciousness that there's something unique about having all of this unexplored territory. And, and being able to be surrounded by all of this nature. It's a very unique situation in their understanding.
Uh looking back on my notes on transcendentalism, there were three elements and it was uh embraces the individual, like with human impulse and intuition, interest in the common person, that people are good, and then awe of nature inspires people rather than fear of God. It will teach us truths and we're all connected with natural world.
Yes, so I must have missed, I must have switched the three and the five, Transcendentalists.
So it's three?
There's five in Romantics, yeah.
So then wait. Awe of nature, interest in common person and embraces the individual.
Right.
Wait, awe of nature.
And so, and but so at the same time within that.
Interest in common person. Should've just wrote down my book order. And embraces the individual. Interesting common person, hold on. And then.
But see, we did, guys, we did this whole thing in class where we connected Romantics and we, we made this distinguish, distinction between Romantics and Transcendentalists. And if you notice, the three, she just rattled off for three of the five that are from the Romantics. We talked about how do you distinguish Romantics from Transcendentalists? And this is where you have to start thinking, because remember, the Romantics just said, nature is beautiful and nature is where we create and there's, and there's all these things out there that, that we should be in awe of. Then here come the Transcendentalists and say, wait a minute. Not only do we find in nature beauty, but we find truth. By reflecting inward onto ourselves and are using our imagination, we find truth. See, we, again, wrote about this as well. We talked about it, we discussed it. You have to be able to make the link between the relationship of Romantics and Transcendentalists, but remember that the distinction is that the Transcendentalists were finding truth. Finding truth by looking within. They went out into nature, they isolated themselves only to be able to reflect, looked inward, use their imagination and find truth. The Romantics were more of like, hey, this is a beautiful picture. Let me appreciate this and write about it. The Transcendentalists said, let me enter the picture, let me reflect on myself, and within that, I'm gonna find truth.
Like what truth?
Every truth, about yourself, about the world. There's only one truth, right, Jeff? No, there's a million truths out there, and that's what they found.
Is it that Gothic is anti-transcendentalism?
Right.
But, but, but transcendentalism is thinking about truth, not something is good or bad?
Well, the Transcendentalists believed that when you looked into yourself, you would find truth and it would always be a good endeavor. The reason the anti-Transcendentalists were anti-Transcendentalists is because they said, no, guess what? When you look inside yourself and if you spend enough time in your mind, you will see all the dark places the mind can take you.
So does it mean that transcendentalism gives more imagination than Romantics? Like they, they think more than Romantics?
Yes, than Romani- yes. I would say that, again. It's a difference between admiring a piece of art and becoming a part of the art yourself. I mean, if I could put an analogy together about that. Kelly.
This is a different question. How did nature and uncertainty play a role in nationalism literature?
We just talked about that. With the Louisiana Purchase and then the New America, whether it was gonna last. And then getting this new frontier.
So they didn't go with the new, okay.
Yeah.
Was there a purchase besides Louisiana?
Not yet, not yet. That's just. Right around the corner.
Where, where does the idea of Gothic come from?
Where does the idea of Gothic come from?
Architecture.
Oh yeah, gargoyles, gargoyles.
Gargoyles, European architecture, the large churches. And then it spills into influences, art and literature.
Gargoyles and like churches?
Gothic architecture is most commonly associated with large Gothic churches and. The kind that wa- the, the kind that actually in awe kind of is not just about nature, it's also about this Gothic architecture. When you walk up to a huge cathedral and you look straight up at it, and you have reverence but at the same time fear. What were you gonna say, John?
So it's, where does the idea of Gothic come from? It comes, it comes from like a Gothic architecture, like gargoyles?
The first time we say anything is Gothic in this world, we're talking about European arch, church architecture, right?
I spell gargoyles.
Huh?
I spell gargoyles.
Oh, G-A-R.
Yeah, G-O-L.
G-O-Y, oh yeah.
Why do, why did Europeans think it, like they, why they built Gothic churches?
That was just the style of architecture. Again, it was really about being so large that you, it, it was, for them, churches were representations of, of God on earth. And so they needed to be grand and, and make you um revere them, but at the same time fear it. So it was just kind of their interpretation of.
Gothic literature is others that look at the church and they.
No, it's not that simple. It's not, it's not just, there was a church, somebody saw it, they wrote about it, and then they had a Gothic text. That's not the way it worked. You have to understand that these are movements and they influence different things. So what we started to see are these big scary churches, right, with gargoyles. Somebody said, wow, this is interesting, this is new, let me try and paint or sculpt or create something in this mold. And so then we start seeing Gothic art, right? And it has this dark feel to it. And you see how from that movement, eventually it gets to literature and we're writing about very dark themes. And when I look at a big church, it scares me and I think about my fear. And then I see a painting of a dark stormy night and I begin to think about bad things. And then I write it down and I'm writing this story about death. And so it all kind of flows from one to the next. It's just an influence.
Uh can we go over it a little bit?
What about it?
Uh, well.
Some characters, themes.
Some of the reflections.
Which characters and themes?
Like the reflections we had in class where we sort of talked about like the themes and how they were represented in the story.
Sure, um.
Just to quickly.
Okay, so let's start with um. Okay, let's start with our understanding of, you gotta go, yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Let's start with our understanding of Pearl. And what did Pearl represent to us? Truth, right? She was this constant seeker of truth. She, and we see it all the time from her constantly asking Hester who her father is to um reminding her mother of the A. Uh to revealing, you know, um Dimmsdale is as not necessarily the best man. Um, that's all Pearl's way of finding truth. So that was a big one. Uh let's see, what's another big one? Um if we look at Gothic, if we look at Gothic genre and we talk about mental torture, we have to talk about Dimmsdale and his guilt. Uh and how he had a hard time escaping it. And if you, you know, he's, he's on the scaffold and, and he's feeling, you know, his own anxiety um to the point where he becomes ill. Um we have Chillingworth and his uh plot for revenge. And how even though he was not, not necessarily consistently wrong, he, he had this need to destroy everything. And it became very destructive for him. And so really, what we're talking about is mental torture. Mental torture of, if you can connect the mental torture between Dimmsdale and Chillingworth and even to an extent Hester, that's a good connection to make as well. Um We can talk about the themes of the outside reflecting the inside of a person. And we see that through Dimmsdale becoming less attractive and sickly, Hester becoming less attractive. Um the townspeople as they're judging Hester. Um so that's a common theme. Inherited guilt with uh, the reason the whole story was written is because Hawthorne felt inherited guilt uh about his Puritan ancestors and how they would persecute and murder women for being witches.
So mental torture can related to inside reflection?
No, I was talking about two different things.
I mean, but Dimmsdale's mental torture did affect on.
Yes, but that all comes from the fact that he wasn't the best person on the inside. Because he was a liar, because he abandoned Hester in her time of need, things like that. What Hawthorne was trying to reflect is that how you are as a person on the inside reflects on the outside.
This is what I talked for in, in the Purloin Letter, is there anything else that has to do with inherited guilt?
No. No.
Can you um repeat the part that like um Tom people, like how?
Remember when she lea- right, she should remember this from reading the book. She exits the jail. She.
May I have your attention, all grade nine resident students? Please bring your copies of The Chicken for the holidays to enrichment today. Again, grade nine residents, please bring a Chicken for the holidays to enrichment today. Thank you.
Fairly, that's the thing. That's the thing. Alright, so she walks out of the prison and people are judging her. And as the people are judging her, she, what we notice as the reader is that the women who are really judging her tend to be, you know, older and ugly, not attractive. And that some of the women, or some of the people in the crowd, actually aren't as harsh. And they tend to be the younger and the more beautiful of them. And so that's kind of setting up the stage for this idea that there is a connection between um, you know, inner beauty and outer beauty. And that continues throughout the book with the characters themselves, alright?
I mean, the inherited guilt part.
So that's not what you asked me. You asked me about inside, outside. So do you wanna know about inherited guilt?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um again, we talked about this. If you read The Custom House, you would know that Hawthorne wrote the book because his ancestors were actually Puritans. Those Puritans killed women for being witches, Salem Witch Trials. Even though he had no connection to them, even though it wasn't his responsibility, he feels guilt for what they did. That's inherited guilt. Guilt that you inherit from your ancestors, okay?
I mean, how does that make him to make, to write The Scarlet Letter? I mean, where does that show in The Scarlet Letter?
It doesn't show in Scarlet Letter. Well, it shows in The Custom House. There's a specific part in The Custom House where he condemns.
It just relates to him.
Puritan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When Hester was judged.
And I mean, if you wanna take it a step further, you could say that the entire book. And I mean, if you wanna take it a step further, you could say that the entire book is a criticism on Puritan society. Judgment, being judgmental, the entire book is a damnation of Puritan values. He did that because of his inherited guilt, because he said these people are wrong.
When Hester was judged in the marketplace and the book said that women who judge is hurt or ugly, but I think they didn't talk about men who were judging him.
Right, it was, so it was just a role of women and it wasn't in the marketplace, it was when she was coming out of the prison. When we first see her coming out of the prison doors.
So it's like the inequality between men and women?
Well, that's another issue of inequality, double standard, I mean, that happens with Hester and Dimmsdale. You know, where Dimmsdale can get away with not revealing himself, but Hester can't because of Pearl. And so that's another theme, we wanna know the connection between Pearl and the letter. Pearl and the Pearl and the letter are both the same, they're the representation of Hester's sin.
You said that one of the theme is like Hester becomes attracted, goes attractive to Dimmsdale, how does that relate to the theme of the?
Not less attracted to Dimmsdale, that's not what I said. She becomes less attractive in general because of hers, because of her insight, because of the way she's acting. She's holding secrets, she's not being honest, she's not being a great mother to Pearl. And that's starting to reflect in her outside. It's all in the book, but you can't read The Scarlet Letter on that, so I understand that. Any other questions? Yes, Kathy?
We'll call for a national literature.
Oh, don't worry about the call, we didn't talk about the journal that called, just know that that's a question where you need to be able to refer to all of the authors that we've covered, because remember nationalism is when we, nationalism is a call that was put out for American authors to write. And all these different American authors that we've read began to write because there was this call to the people for American literature, for good American literature. So just be able to identify the writers that we've read over the course of the year.
Was Walden purely just like, hey, I did this experiment and like this is what happened or was it more like his reflection on himself?
We get a little bit of that, but the basis, if you read it, it reads very much like a journal of his experiences out there. He does have those moments of reflection, but it's nothing like Emerson. Emerson's just all reflection on, you know, the value of nature, your place in it, how society, we should all fit in and live our lives and things like that. Think of Emerson as sounding a lot more like Franklin, whereas Thoreau is really telling kind of a story, alright? Anything else? I know, it's a lot to take in. You're welcome, Garrett, I hope this helps everybody. Feel free, like I said, it'll be on deadline very shortly, if you wanna listen to it again.
Oh, did you record this?
Yes.
Hi, George, come on here. Is that be recorded?